... so just bear with them. Megan stole it.
Yeah.
(noise) (inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united as one, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.[18.21][18.21](noise)
Right. Start with our council activity reports. I unfortunately was not able to attend the E-DAP meeting or the airport board meetings that were scheduled for me, so I apologize for that. We did have a lodging tax meeting last week, though, that I was able to attend. And I think that one was, dare I say, one of the most productive ones that group has ever had. At least, from what I thought, we got a lot accomplished. There was a lot of discussion about this new postcard program of putting postcards of the area in the hotel rooms, both at Bugbee and at the hotel here in town, featuring Painesville that people can then mail out, along with discussion of how we're going to next spring. We're going to rent a 360-degree camera, take that around the trails, and then we can upload that right to Google so that people can check out the trails from their home before they come up here and see it. Along with doing some stuff, we decided not to go forward with the billboard anymore. Members just thought that that was 12 grand a year and didn't know if we could justify the cost of the billboard. So, no more billboard. Although, as I was driving back from Anoka today, I saw that Explore Minnesota had Lake Coronas on their billboard. So...
That's cool.
I don't know if that's through the lodging program or not, but it was there. But instead, we're going to take the grant money that we get from Explore Minnesota. There's an email blast program that we can participate in, and then there's some other stuff that we can do. So, we're going to explore some other things with that. So, I think that was a very productive meeting. Otherwise, that's all I have. So, Neil?
I had no meetings. The only one was the Green Roof Rose Center meeting. And the biggest thing there is their entryway behind, and they got a roof on it before the rain, so that's processing. And then, it has informed us, grant for Rose Center, that's your vans and the senior trips and all that kind of thing, where they haul people. It was normally 60,000, and this year it was 30,000. So...
Ooh.
Yeah, they're looking for funds for the Rose Center.
Are we doing the plowing for them again this year?
The plan is to yes.
Okay. Yep. Right. Anything else?
Nope.
That's it. Megan?
I did not attend any meetings either. I had two scheduled on the same day, and they were both canceled. So, took it as a sign I shouldn't do anything else that day, and I didn't. It was great. It was a quiet couple of weeks for me as well.
I won't deny that I was somewhat grateful that that league event canceled. The email I sent to Tarek was, "I know there's a light in this tunnel somewhere. I'm starting to see flickers of it."
Yep.
Gene?
Well, I did have some meetings.
Well, hey, one of us did something.
It's good somebody did.
Well, the E-DAP meeting, and that's on the agenda. So, they don't need to go into that. And the liquor board, we tweaked a few more things on the plans, but other than that. And the downtown meeting was last Wednesday.
All right. How's that going?
Going, isn't it, Joe?
Hi. I'm here just as an observer, but I'd like to say that I think we're making good progress with the information to go forward, and it's been very, very good. And we've got to make sure that we deal with a number of issues to make this work. So, that said, the grant isn't going to be...
Survey's going to be going out soon to all the businesses downtown.
One thing I know, I've mentioned to Gene and Ron a little bit. My wife works at the library, and they have a patron who uses a wheelchair. So, I think, I know we have a requirement to be ADA compliant, but if we can just be cognizant of people who use other mobility methods. I know she said that one day this person came in quite distraught because she'd been stuck on the street for 15 or 20 minutes in the rain, couldn't find a ramp up. So, I don't know what happened. I think that's probably a one-off event, but if there's anything else we can do, I think we should just pay attention to that. Anything else, then, Gene?
No, that's it.
All right. On then to the department head reports. Ron, you're actually here this week.
I am. Thank you.
Chuck gave you a report for your last meeting.
Oh, that's nice.[298.12][298.12](laughing) Compliment site is closed at this time. The donations for the year out there were over $1,400. Plus, we did bring in from all the commercial units an additional $1,050. The RV dump donations brought in $1,360 to this point. I'd like to remind residents of the winter parking regulations, and the winter decorations are up. I think everyone can see. The tree that was planted in the gazebo park, I'd like to make a note that it was donated and planted by the Painesville Garden Center. So, I thank them for that. The Lake Avenue Riverbank project, the North Fork of the Crow, they did come through. Say the funding for that, I think it's a 75-25 split. So, that project will proceed and get that taken care of. Park reservations, like to remind residents, you can reserve the park for next year. To date, we do have 11 of them that have taken advantage of that. The Ampey Park Shelter is on the agenda for the first payment tonight, but that is progressing quite nicely. And also, I did attend the training from the Minnesota Rural Water Association on financing, and one of the things there was financing for the lead and copper survey that went out. Anyone who does have a lead line, which in town, we don't have any left, however, galvanized is included in that, and they will get their service line paid for from the curb stop all the way into the house. So, that is quite intriguing, and we do have like 60-some of them that we have currently identified. So, that project will likely occur 2026, 2027.
For homeowners like me who got the letter that said, "We don't know what you have from the service line to your house," how do we go about identifying that?
Once we get that list, somebody from my crew will be around contacting you, coming in and taking the picture and...
Okay. Inside the house, we were able to confirm it's copper. It's what's underground. I don't know. From the website, it looked like everybody around me was compliant, but for some reason, I couldn't be confirmed. And there were a number of others like that, so I just didn't know what the process was to finalize it.
We'll take care of that.
Okay. Any questions for Ron? Or anything else, Ron? I'm sorry if I cut you off.
That's it.
Okay. Tarek?
All right. Had a number of meetings, many of which were mentioned already. We did have budget and finance, and we kind of finalized the budget that we'll be presenting. We had a library board meeting, and I think everybody there is anxious to kind of finally take ownership and close on those lots so we can do the swap. And that way, we have a confirmed lot that we can use and start promoting and continuing with the plans for the library.
Where are we at with that? Sorry to interrupt you, but...
I think almost all the signatures are done for the completed swap, but yeah, it's moving along, and I know maybe Bill maybe has a latest update on that.
I think that I have sent the deed in for recording. So, it should be, I mean, it should be recorded, but I mean, you know, it usually takes a week or so to get it back, 10 days sometimes to get it back from Stearns County, but I think it should be recorded. The only thing, I had an email from Mr. Johnson that there was apparently center care, had like a mower and maybe a snow blower stored in that...
The shed, yeah.
Shed in the back. And Fortitude Senior Living had contacted him and told him they need to get it out. And I said, "Can you tell me when that's done?" And I haven't heard, but I, you know, it's not a big deal. But I just said, you know, "If they want to just cut the lock off and throw it away, that's fine, but if they're going to put the lock on, send us a key."[532.62][532.62](laughing)
Fair enough.
Yeah. So, that's pretty much nearly finalized. Also, the airport board meeting, where we talked about building an FBO hangar to bring in a business. There was some discussion on that. Downtown planning board, of course, as you heard, we're going to be doing a survey. I think the board will get a chance to review the final version in the December meeting, and then we will go in person in January, February, with a deadline of having surveys back by March. We had a planning board meeting where we are doing some ordinance changes. E-DAP meeting, which you'll see, we have an E-DAP loan request on today's agenda. We had a liquor board meeting, and as Gene mentioned, it's coming along quite well. We also did have a joint planning meeting, which was our first one since February this year. We'll be having a new member join since Mike Jensen is retiring. His replacement will be taken over. And then, we might have some activity with the board early next year. And then, of course, as you mentioned, the lodging tax, and I won't go into any more detail about that.
Any questions for Tarek, anyone? All right. Joe, did you want to talk to us as part of the open forum, or are you just hanging out to observe us tonight?
I'm just observing.
All right.
Pretty sure nothing gives out of hand.
Well, no promises. Gene is here after all.
We're a pretty rowdy bunch.
Yeah. I cracked the whip.
All right. Then we'll move on to the consent agenda. I'd entertain a motion to approve that. That includes the minutes on page one, the vouchers on two, and then just a slight adjustment in Ron's retirement date on page three. Is there a motion on the consent agenda, or does anybody want something pulled?
I'll make a motion to approve. I'm a little hesitant on C, but guess that's what it is.
I get it, but it's that darn 13th amendment that keeps them...[645.41][645.41](laughing)
Well, I'd like to...
I was hoping it was...
Change the date about another six months.
Adjusted to 2027 or something, but no dice, so I'll second.
All right. So, motion by Hersberg, seconded by Brick. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. All right. Old business. Item A. Tarek on the city attorney.
Yep. We, of course, as you know, we selected Candy Graven to be our next attorney. They sent us their agreement to review. I reviewed it. Bill Spooner reviewed it. We went back to them with some revisions, and I think Jennifer and Belinda had a chance to review it as well. But yeah, after making a few tweaks to it, this is the final draft that we're submitting to you for your approval or review and approval.
With that, we'd be looking for a motion to approve the retainer agreement between the city and Kennedy and Graven.
I'll make the motion to approve the agreement for Kennedy and Graven and the city of Painesville.
There's a motion to approve the agreement by Sweeney. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Hersberg. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. All right.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. All right. Onto page 10. Chuck on the Ampey Park Shelter.
Yes, as Ron mentioned earlier, the shelter project is coming along quite nicely. All the concrete work has been done and the block work. They're not working on the framing. So, that project is progressing. In your packet is a copy of pay request number one for that project and the amount of $302,418.34 for work completed through the end of October.
Do we have an estimated completion date for that yet?
They're hoping to get, within the next, really, within the next few weeks, hoping to get the majority of it done. There'll be some touch-up stuff, obviously, in the spring, once we get to that with the seeding and stuff like that.
Okay. So, we have a recommendation to approve payment estimate number one. Is anybody making that motion? So... Motion by Hersberg. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Sweeney. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. Right then, onto page 14, the AMPI Phase Two. Ron?
All right. Thank you. Seems like we've been working on this for over a year already. I think the holdup was mainly getting access to the back property. We worked back and forth, and we did come up with the access, or the city would be granting them an easement across the north end of our property. Again, this is for AMPI installing a DAF. They're going to purchase the entire four acres that we have in the back that's currently unused. DAFA again stands for dissolved air flotation. It is a pre-treatment device for wastewater and works very well in that, in the dairy industry. AMPI will also load their solids out of there, and their expected completion time is the fall of 2025. I guess we'll have to work with the next Public Works Director to see if they still want the city to operate this or if they choose to operate it themselves. But I guess there was one more glitch in this, and Attorney Spooner found out today that we are going to be required to plat this property. So, I think Bill was recommending that we could approve this agreement. However, we will need to go through the plating process. AMPI has been notified of this, and they pretty much gave us the green light, said, "Let's get it done." We're far too deep into this, and we need it. They know it, and so...
All right. And Tarek noted to me that that's going to be a plating, not with the city, but with the township. So, we'd be looking for tonight, as I understand, your recommendation is to approve the agreement for the sale contingent on the plating completion.
Does Bill feel as comfortable with that?
I mean, the agreement kind of deals with the fact that if the county required something to split these lots, that AMPI would be responsible for the cost. So, we'll have to track the cost of the plating, but I think Ron kind of talked to him about it, told him that there'd be some $3,000, $4,000 of cost probably for the plating process, and they said, "Get it done." So, I think, sign the agreement and get going with the plating process. I was surprised. I thought, you know, when we talked about it, it sounded to me like we had combined these lots kind of as a matter of convenience. But for whatever reason, Stearns County said, "Because of the size of the lots and the zone that it's in, it's got to be platted." So, there you go.
All right. So, they are willing to pay the plating?
I believe they are. I believe AMPI is willing to bear that cost.
They are, or are the cost?
Yep.
Well, I have one question, Ron. At Public Works, when we were talking about this, they talked about a possible park donation. Is that still in the works?
Yes, it is.
Okay, good. That doesn't, that's just a, it's a donation. It's not in writing or has to be?
No, that is a donation from AMPI to the city, yes.
Beautiful. With that, I will make the motion to approve the agreement for sale and purchase of real property between the city of Painesville and Associated Milk Producers Incorporated for four acres in the amount of $36,000.
Motion by Hersberg is stated on the action sheet. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Brick. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carries. We're going to skip over the Nelsa Properties one here, old business D, because we have a 630 public hearing on that. So, we'll come back around to it after that. Closing of inactive funds, new business A, page 27. Tarek, anything special we should know about this, other than what Belinda's noted here?
No, it was a TIF for Savage Land, and it was closed off end of last year. And the last payment we received on it was January 11, 2024, in the amount of $8,699.98, which, of course, it was transferred to the general fund. So, at the moment, there's nothing in this fund.
Okay. With that, we're looking for a motion to close the fund, since it's inactive anyway.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Sweeney. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Brick. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carries. All right. Then, we'd like to amend the membership of the safety board from eight members down to seven. Help that board meet quorum. We did also have a recent withdrawal from the board, so this would fit. There would no longer be a vacancy.
Yeah, we always struggle to get a quorum in that board, so I think reducing it back down to seven will help.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance number 54, third series, amending safety board membership.
Is a motion by Hersberg. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Sweeney. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carries. All right. Park transfer. Tarek, anything you need to tell us about this that's not on here?
Well, this is a park dedication fund. We're transferring most of it except for $1,000, right, Ron, to pay for Ampey Park Shelter?
Was this transfer already contemplated in our budgeting numbers, or is this sort of...
This was contemplated, I believe, with the shortfall for the Ampey Park Shelter.
To help cover that, yeah.
This will help cover the cost of the Ampey Park Shelter, yes.
Let me rephrase. This will help cover the cost, but that's not going to reduce the amount that we're lending to ourselves, is it?
No.
Okay. All right. So, then a motion to go ahead and facilitate this transfer would be in order.
I'll move to transfer of $31,517.83 from 129 Park Dedication Capital Improvement Fund to 123 Park Capital Improvement Fund, leaving a balance of $1,000 in Fund 129.
All right. There's a motion by Brick, is stated on the action sheet. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Sweeney. Heard it there first. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carries. All right. Tarek on this E-DAP loan, page 21 of our original agenda...
Yeah.
No, I'm sorry, no. Page 31 of the original agenda, 21 of the update.
Hey, we received a request for E-DAP loan interest-free program to help revitalize or remodel a building. This is for Leeser Insurance, which is having a new building they want to remodel. And part of the program calls for a 50-50 match, so the total project for remodel that he has going on is 20, oh boy, I know the half amount.
25.
25,000 roughly. So, he's asking for $12,150 in interest-free E-DAP loan, equal payments over five years. He submitted to us the quotes and the prices he got from the local contractors to do the work, and the E-DAP board is recommending this loan. And it's, it will be split 50-50 between city and township.
It looks like the update is to just update the name from Leeser Insurance to Roski Insurance.
Yep. He told us he was changing the name.
Okay. All right. Any questions on this, although as E-DAP has approved it and would recommend signing, and I'd entertain a motion on that?
So, this is a new building?
Next to the new dentist on 55.
It's an existing, it looks kind of like a storage shed, but there is sort of an office-y part of it.
Office, okay.
It's up there. It just, it looks storage.
Okay.
From the back.
Yeah, from the front. It looks less like a storage building.
All right.
I'll make the motion to approve economic development revitalization loan agreement, promissory note, and personal guarantee between the city of Painesville and Roski Insurance Agency, Inc.
All right. Motion by Sweeney, is stated on the updated agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Hersberg. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carries. All right. Airport CIP on page 39 of the original. Ron?
I'll take this one.
Okay. Chuck?
In your packet is a copy of the CIP for the airport. This is something we look at every year, sort of plan projects out. As the council's aware, the city receives funding from the federal government in the amount of $150,000 a year to use for different projects at the airport. In addition, a few years ago, there was additional funding, the Bill, Bill Funding, it's called. It's part of the Invest in America federal program. So, the city was receiving additional funding over the past few years through that program as well. You can see the projects planned for 2025, primarily, there's an area in the hangar area that the pavement is just really, can't be rehabbed anymore, crack sealed anymore. So, there's a smaller, an area about $100,000 worth of paving that needs to be done. The gate was planned to be pushed further down the line for a future year. And then, as mentioned earlier, the FBO building is, the airport commission's been talking about to utilize their bill funds to build an FBO hangar at the airport. And that's projected to be like in, I believe it's 95% federal funding, 2.5% state, and 2.5% local, if I recall correctly. So, you can see that project's about just over $1 million. Then, moving forward in the future years, obviously, we'll sort of reevaluate these. As the council may recall, we have a payment rehab project that's been pushed out a few more years into the 2028 timeframe. In order for us to do that, we're going to have to work with the FAA and MEND on updating the airport master plan over the next couple of years. And then, we'll continue to monitor the pavement of the crack and to see how the cracks hold up that were repaired this year. 2028 is the year we'd be tentatively looking to do an overlay of the pavements. That's a large project that we're going to have to work with them to trigger some discretionary federal funding, because we'll never build up our $150,000 allotment per year to cover a project like that. Pavement projects, particularly along the runway, usually do score fairly highly in the discretionary funds, so. And then, that sort of continues in the 29, and then, we have another tee hangar sort of tentatively scheduled for the 2030. But once again, in order to complete those projects, we usually have to borrow funds, several funds from other airports in order to be able to accomplish some of the projects, just based on their dollar value.
Just to note, on that 2028 project is also the lighting. Everything will be switched to an LED up and down the runway, so that is also a cost savings one.
Is it worth discussing at the council level, the idea that was thrown about by the airport board in terms of lengthening the runway versus building the FBO hangar?
So, we are, you know, we're putting a memo together for Ron on that. There, it is quite a process to lengthen a runway at your airport. There's a justification, we'd have to actually initiate the master plan update, as well as do a justification survey to make sure that you can provide the, there's going to be enough operations at the airport to justify the increased length. So, it's quite an extensive process.
So, for the council that doesn't know already, there was a discussion at the last airport board meeting, unfortunately, I wasn't there, but I got filled in, about potentially, instead of building an FBO hangar, moving forward with lengthening the runway and using the funds for the FBO hangar for that purpose. This is my two cents. Someone correct me if I'm wrong. Lengthening the runway isn't on our capital improvement plan, so first, we'd have to get it on there. Then, we'd have to secure the funding. And by the time we went through all of those things and updated the master plan, the money that we have sitting here in the account to use for the FBO hangar would be gone. And the FBO hangar at the projected rental rates could pay for itself in as little as a year or two, and then, from there on, it would just be a profit maker for the airport.
Yeah.
So, my sense is that, given the length of time that it's going to take us to look at an airport, or at a runway extension, and then knowing that this could be making us money in as little as two years, it doesn't make sense for us to postpone the FBO hangar. We have interest in it, and I think we should just move forward with it right now. Neil?
What would be the need for an expansion of the runway? Bigger planes?
Bigger planes, yeah.
Bigger planes, greater fuel sales, more planes can land here, so you get more people coming in.
So, in the future, that could make sense.
It could, yeah.
Well, it's lengthening the runway definitely has its merits, but it needs to be planned. Like you said, we don't have it on our CIP, so that's the first thing we'd have to do. So, it's going to be about a five to a seven-year process.
Do we currently have enough land to do that?
That all needs to be worked out in the master plan.
But I think, I just wanted to raise it because it was something the airport board talked about, and I, if it was something we could realistically do before these funds were expired, it might be worth talking about. But we have the funding there for the FBO hangar that could generate a significant profit for the airport. And I think, frankly, it would probably, that FBO hangar at the rental rates talked about, would close most, if not all, of the airport funding gap, once it's paid for. So, I think from a city level fiscally, we need to just move forward with that and build it up. Chuck, the only other thing, and I think you sort of touched on this, that 2025 security access gate, was that going to be pulled off of there, since it's on in 29 as well?
Yeah, the one in 25 is going to be removed.
Okay. So, basically, we're approving this minus that access gate. Unless there's any further discussion, I'd entertain a motion to approve the CIP minus the 25 access gate.
Full move.
Motion by Hersberg. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Megan. Sorry, Gene?
That's great.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. All right. I will just note, it's not quite 6:30 yet. Gene, I'm watching.
All right. One minute.
I know. Bill doesn't like when I'm early. Now, we've got a number of informational things here, meeting schedules, garbage rates, along with an update hearing from Stearns County's, what are they doing here on the Watershed District. So, welcome to that. And then, let us open our public hearing on the Nelsa Properties E-DAP business subsidy. Page one of our update, and I will turn it over to Tarek to talk to us about what's going on here.
All right. We had a request to do an E-DAP loan from Nelsa Properties, which we have the two members representing the company here with us tonight. It is, of course, gap financing, which is, means it's completing the financing they're already getting from the bank to build a new, a new line, a new facility. I guess you guys can talk more about it in a minute, which would generate... I guess you guys can talk more about it in a minute, uh, which would generate a certain number of jobs, I think, six jobs at a, I think, average rate of twenty or something an hour, twenty. And it would go to support the existing business. I think it's Minnesota Molding is a primary business that will be operating in there. And then, of course, Valley Industries or under Savage will be, uh, using the facility as well, primarily warehousing or storing some of the product. And they're requesting, uh, four hundred and fifty thousand, uh, in an E-DAP loan. It'll be a balloon loan, so ten years amortized over twenty. Interest rate on it will be the, uh, current going interest rate for E-DAP loans at six and a half percent. And this will be shared equally with the township.
Tarek, what is the current balance of our E-DAP fund?
It is, um, here, I'll pull it up. Close this off here.
Oh, it's six hundred something.
I think it's in the five hundreds, hold on.
I was thinking six.
Where is the revolving fund here? Okay, the loan balance is five hundred and fifty-three thousand.
So this would drop that to three and a quarter.
It would drop it to...
Hundred and three.
Only two twenty-five is her most.
Uh, three twenty-eight change.
I thought it was the same.
Okay, so my biggest concern was that it's a fairly large amount, but I think we're still in relatively decent shape. Gentlemen, anything you want us to know about the project? If I could ask that you step up to the mic, just let, Kristen can hear you in the back for minutes. But anything that Tarek hasn't already said?
Maybe some details about the use of the building or what's gonna happen there?
So Minnesota Molding was actually, when we started it, we just put it in an existing warehouse, um, which got us by for seven years here. But we need to actually add more equipment, and we don't have enough power in that building, and that's kind of what drove this. So this building would be designed kind of around that blow molding business. So it'd give us the option to put in more equipment.
Bathrooms.
Yeah. Bathrooms, break rooms. Right now, that's all shared with Nelson Plastics. It isn't real convenient. And then we would be sprinkled, uh, I don't know, do you have any, anything else?
Minnesota Molding provides a lot of, while they're doing a lot of business outside of Valley Industries as well now, so hence the growth. Uh, Valley Industries has also purchased a lot of components from Minnesota Molding, a lot of tanks, uh, and Valley is constantly growing. You know, I think, I, I think we're around sixty-five, seventy people just in the city of Paintsville that we employ here in this location. So, uh, adding the extra space that will now be heated and sprinkled will allow us to possibly, we're thinking a little R and D area in there, uh, for our engineers and, hopefully, some additional employees to help out in the engineering field, engineering technicians or whatever. And then possibly some production in that building, too. I think it's, uh, it's important for, well, Tarek knows, Valley Industries has been looking for two years to do something, and he's just been totally, uh, up against the wall with the costs. So doing this and sharing it with Minnesota Molding just seemed to make the most sense. So that's why we're pursuing it this way.
So am I understanding it right? No, I'm sorry, Wayne, if I just cut you off.
Well, I was gonna say, so when we were, in the building we're in, um, we have three blow molders, and I'm trying to, I think we have a thousand amp service at four hundred and eighty volts. This building will have a three thousand amp service at four hundred and eighty volts. So potentially, we can go, you know, basically up to nine blow molding machines in there.
It's a big building.
And we've got a new machine on order right now.
Yeah.
If the building would get done.
Wayne, I'll quick.
It is going up quick. Here, I thought I was crazy for wanting to upgrade my house to three hundred amp, though. So we talked about in here, Tarek mentioned eight new jobs. Is that eight planned for immediately with additional to come, once you add like the R and D sector over there? Or are you contemplating that eight is kind of going to be the maximum number in that facility?
I, I can't, I can't speak for Valley. Minnesota Molding, it would be six. We plan to add two blow molding machines, um, running them around the three shifts. It would be s- three, two people per shift, six people.
And, and the agreement says Valley would probably have two.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say about two. I mean, we're always, I mean, we've got four or five open positions now. I mean, we, I, I'm sure, we're like everybody else, we struggle.
Yeah.
We got, we've got a marketing, engineering technician, we've got a couple of positions in the warehouse. Actually, our production's been, has been, we've been able to fill it up and keep, keep it staffed.
Could you talk to us a little bit, just because we have to do a, approve it, a but-for test? If this loan doesn't go through, is it true then that the project doesn't happen, and you're kind of just stuck in your tracks?
I mean, we'd be lying if we said, "It's not gonna happen." But it is gap financing. We are putting in four hundred and fifty thousand dollars cash. The bank wants twenty-five percent, so that'd be about nine hundred thousand. We could borrow against equity in our facilities. But there's costs that come along with that. We have to get business appraisals on both businesses, uh, and we're trying to avoid that, trying to save money.
Trying to keep costs down.
Yeah.
And then I assume that if those costs go up, you might not be able to employ as many people with the expansion?
It's just, everything costs so much, you know? It's just, uh, and, you know, that's, that's why I like to build pole buildings, people call it, is, you know, it's, it's, it's a cheaper way, I guess, to, to get space. We're, we're always trying, I mean, buildings don't make money, so, uh, we're just trying to do everything we can to cut our costs.
Tarek, anything else we need to know about? Gentlemen, anything? Bill, anything more we need to talk about?
I mean, you know, ultimately, assuming the council approves this, um, I'd be looking for a timeline that you guys are looking at to try to close. I don't know where, you, I, I know you have a larger loan at Magnifi, I don't know if that's got a closing date yet, or where you're at with closing stuff.
Everything's right there, ready to go, just waiting to see what, what happens here. So it would, it would be, it'd be fairly quickly.
Because once I get a date, I mean, then I gotta get an amortization schedule, and some dates and, you know, these draft documents might change a little bit depending on the closing date, but I drafted these in a belief that we were gonna close in this year.
Oh, we, we would hope so.
Yeah. So, so, you know, I mean, I guess, let Tarek know, and Tarek and I will schedule it. I think it makes sense to close probably at the same time that your larger loan closes, or the same day, maybe not the same time, but the same day. So we would work with you on that and put our, you know, adjust our paperwork to, to go with that if that, if that works out, but you just gotta let us know.
Okay. Anybody else have questions for anyone? Otherwise, anyone else want to speak on the public hearing for this? Okay. Then with that, we will close our public hearing, and we'll go back to old business, item D, Nelson Properties LLC E-DAP Business Subsidy. We have a number of recommended motions here, which includes approving the development loan agreement, the personal guarantee, the promissory note, the mortgage, along with splitting it equally between the city and the township. Procedurally, and I don't know that it affects us any, Tarek or Bill, but could have you talked to us about, um, since we're doing this as a joint meeting for the township as well, how they go about approving it? Are they just gonna take it up at their next business meeting then, and rely on our findings?
I mean, I, I think the town, the township passed a resolution, I am, I don't know that I've physically seen the resolution, but I understand they adopted a resolution authorizing the city to hold the public hearing. I think they still have to approve everything at their next meeting, whenever that is. But I, I mean, they may have already approved it. I, I don't, I'm not aware.
They haven't, they're wait, they're waiting for the public hearing.
Okay. So, so, I mean, I think we should get it to them so it can get on, I don't know when their next meeting is, but...
In terms of closing, that could be at least a week or two on that part, I would imagine.
Yeah, again, I don't know when their next meeting is, they can't approve it till they have a meeting, so.
Right.
That is.
Any discussion by the council? All right, then I'd entertain a motion on this.
I'll make a motion as stated on the action sheet.
So motion by Brick as stated on the action sheet to approve the E-DAP loan agreement, guarantee, promissory note, and mortgage between the city and Nelson Properties, amount of four hundred and fifty thousand, split equally between the city and the township, at a six and a half percent interest rate, amortized over twenty years with a ten-year balloon. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Hertzberg. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? None? Motion carries. All right. Thanks, gentlemen. We'll be in touch on signing, but otherwise, everything, at least from the city's standpoint, there you go.
Let me know on a closing date.
Thank you. All right. Then we have a couple of proposed closed sessions here, indicating that they're gonna be addressed at six forty-five and at seven. Does that mean that we're expecting people to come in at six forty-five and seven?
Uh, six forty-five, uh, no one's coming. It's just an agreement, um, to review and approve if we want to proceed with having them work on a plan for us. The second closed session, I invited both members. Uh, one of them I know is not around, not in town, one of them is, but I'm not sure if they will come or not. There was a lot of back and forth.
Okay, hold on just one second here. Do we have to do these in a closed session?
That's a Bill question.
You don't have to. I mean...
I wouldn't think, this first one, for sure, we didn't.
I, I think...
We're not talking any prices.
My preference at this point would just be, we've been talking about developing this property for so long, and going back and forth and doing various things. I would kind of rather just do it publicly and let it all be out there. That's my thought, but...
Mine, too.
If somebody wants to move us into a closed session, I wouldn't, I wouldn't oppose it. All right, I'm not hearing a motion, so let's just talk. We're gonna talk about the, the offer on real property located at seventy point three eight six four one, point zero zero four zero, item ten on our agenda. Tarek, do you want to talk us through a little bit about this?
Uh, yeah. I was approached by...
And since we're talking about this publicly, instead of a closed session, we can... Joe, I've got a copy here, if you want to see what I've got, we'll make copies of these.
There's an extra here.
Confidential documents for other people if they need it. Yeah, go ahead.
Since Paul's not here.
Gee.
I know.
All right, good. Go ahead, Tarek.
Right. The, yeah, I was talking to Mr. Furchy about this property, uh, about developing it. Uh, we have been talking to another, actually, more than one developer, but one, I, I guess, we've been talking to for quite some time to come up with a plan. Uh, we have thirteen acres, as you know, kind of behind Midwest machinery that we'd like to promote and try to see if we can get a developer to do some residential, mixed-use residential, which means not single-family, not apartments, maybe a combination of, uh, single-family residence, uh, townhomes, uh, apartments, you know, something that the, the community needs. And as you know, there's, you know, some pent-up demand for housing around here. So in talking to developers, um, you know, Mr. Furchy indicated that he would like some exclusivity or some time where we're only working with him so he can come up with a plan, and I think he's, he, he's requesting ninety days, is that what's in here?
March first, is what I'm seeing.
Yeah. So approximately ninety days for him to come up with a plan. Uh, and in the plan, he says he will show us what his plan and vision is for the entire thirteen-acre lot. Uh, so the agreement in front of you is for that, and if we agree to it, uh, we would give him that amount of time. And similar to the other developers we're talking to, um, you know, they're, uh, they want, you know, same kind of terms, which will be acquiring the land for one dollar to develop as residential property. And by signing this, that means we cannot be negotiating or talking to another developer during that time period. And if we like the plan, we can proceed. If we don't like the plan, we can continue on with someone else.
Well, the, the thing is, he's offering a plan for the whole thirteen acres.
The entire thirteen acres.
And the others only...
Yeah. Want me to explain the other one?
Well, we should, I guess, to compare.
Okay.
No?
They're not here yet, so I don't necessarily wanna...
We can give them time if you want to see if they, they come.
Let me just ask this question, and maybe then the council can just decide if we want to hear from both, if we should just take a recess until they get here. I'm not seeing a consideration for the option agreement in terms of monies or something that we're getting out of us giving them the option on this property.
There's, there's none included in there. You know, we'd been negotiating an option, um, which wasn't identical to this, but it also didn't have any consideration with other parties, and I think basically, we were just interested in getting a plan, and if it took a developer a little bit of time to present a plan, we weren't asking for money from them for, for doing that. I think the desire was to get a plan and get going. It wouldn't be unusual to pay some money for an op, for an exclusive option, but we hadn't asked for that on, on the dra, on the previous drafts, um, with, with other developers, so we did not on this one either.
I guess I like the ninety-day window. It's probably something we should have done in the past.
Ninety days and the full thirteen.
Because ninety days, then we don't, and by approving this, gives them ninety days for the plan, it doesn't mean we accept the plan, correct?
No.
So if the other developer still wanted to get involved after ninety days, he could and offer a competing plan or...
He could. My thought, though, of course, is that if we say no, and then we turn down the plan, now we've upset the apple cart on that one and...
But I mean, right now, we really don't have much of a plan.
No.
From either one.
I don't think we do. I mean, maybe we do, but if we have something in terms of a plan from the other one, then I think this is it, we've got a paper.
I'll explain that one, too, yeah.
Then I'm thinking, maybe it's best we just recess until seven, when those folks get here and we can hear them both and...
If they, no, only one of them will show up.
Only one of them is coming?
Maybe.
But then at least we can compare apples to apples. They were told seven o'clock to be here, so...
Okay.
I think it'd be putting them at a disadvantage if we talked about them buying their back.
Okay.
If nobody comes, we can discuss and make a decision.
That's my thought. All right, so with...
We're on recess?
We're in recess until seven o'clock. And if you guys want to go, I'm okay with that. If you want to stick around, I'm okay with that, too. It's seven o'clock, so we'll go back on the record. All right. We took a short recess so that we could wait for anyone who might be coming for the seven o'clock meeting to be here. Unfortunately, no one's here, so we'll move on. We had talked about this option agreement by Jason Furchy. Tarek, can you tell us about the other proposal here?
Yeah, uh, we were working with another developer for over a year now, uh, trying to come up with a plan, same thing. They initially approached us, they're really, uh, excited about, um, developing the property for us. Uh, the terms that we agreed to, and with a similar term, they acquired it for a dollar and developed the thirteen acres. They just submit a plan to us... it for $1 and developed the 13 acres. They did submit a plan to us. However, the plan is not for the entire 13 acres, because they don't know what they will do with the 13 acres yet. When we asked them to give us the amount of acres they need to put up the apartment building, because that's the plan they have, and we will reach out to another developer to develop the rest, they said no, they want to develop all of it. So, I also went back to them again and said that, you know, we'd like to review a complete plan, even if it's in phases. And I know Bill Spooner worked with me on that to kind of come up with a phasing language, phase one, phase two, phase three. So, over a number of years, three, five, 10 years, we can see the project completed. And even then, we got a, this is what we have back, they, they want to do a phase one for an apartment building, as you can see in front of you. And then later, they're not sure when, they'll do a phase two for the apartment building, and then the remaining area there next to it, and across that new street that would go in there, they're not sure what they would put in there yet.
This area to the west, across that new street, would that be large enough to accommodate single-family homes if they wanted to do that?
Uh, that was the idea, either single-family or townhomes.
Okay. No plan, no commitment for that yet, but that's the thought.
Yeah, and they still want all of it to develop.
So we have an option agreement from one developer who thinks he wants to use all of it, but doesn't know exactly for what yet. And another one who wants to buy the lot for $1, eventually wants to build on all of it, is the goal, has identified a use for at least a small portion, and is there a commitment for at least this phase two on here, within like five years or something?
Uh, if we wanted to, they would probably give us a number of years. The first developer, yeah, they would, if we signed the option agreement with them, they will show us the entire development, the entire plan. But they'll need some time to develop it, because we only recently started talking to them, so they haven't had time to do anything with it yet.
Fair. I guess, here's my thought, and I, I sort of mentioned it to Jean during our recess, is why don't we just throw this out for a request for proposals, and say we want proposals for how to use this land. If we sell it to you for $1, anyone and everyone can put in their proposal, and then we can pick from the best.
Uh, I did reach out to two other developers over the spring and summer, and they were not interested. I know that in the E-DAP meeting, there was indication that there might be other developers interested, but I think that now, because we're talking to these two developers, if we are to change our plans and say we want to do an RFP, we'll probably lose these two.
And the other difference is the road that has to go in.
Yeah, the developer who wants us to sign an option agreement said that they will put in the road, whereas the plan in front of you with the apartment building, they would want the city to put in. And when I said that it will be assessed back to the property, similar to what we did to other developments, especially since we're giving them the land, and most likely we will do some type of TIF or tax payment on it, they wanted the city to, to pay for the road, so.
I think we've been dinging around long enough with these guys. I'm sorry, if we have somebody who really wants to give us a good plan for 13 acres, we need to give them a chance to get it to us.
We can, you know, we can let them honor the deadline and see what they come up with, and then, if we don't like it, we can do an RFP, we can, you know...
Yeah. Is, so the one who wants the 90 days, is that the one who plans to do mixed apartments and...
Uh, yeah, I, I asked him kind of what his idea was on the plan, and he said yes, for sure, an apartment building, and then the rest of it, probably some townhomes, and he's not sure if he'll do single-family or all-townhomes. Then, that's why he needs time to kind of develop it and work with his engineers on it.
And, and a combination would be fine, too.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
The need is there.
It is. My preference would be not solely apartment buildings, so...
No, it won't be...
No, I don't want...
That's what I'm saying, so that's why, it's another point in his view, as far as I'm concerned.
If on the plan, he could come up with like a timetable would be good, too.
Yep, that was stressed as well.
Apartment done first.
Yeah.
By fall.
I guess I'm...
Houses done within the next three years, you know, kind of a timetable.
And I'm kind of scared of the one that we've been working with for so long, because who's to say they'll build the first apartment building, and maybe even the second one, but then they don't want to do it, that's all they want to do, is apartment buildings. Well, we don't want all apartment buildings there.
Mm-hmm.
And it may take them 15 years to do it.
And they want all the land, yeah.
I don't think we should lock all the land up for one person, if that's all they're going to do.
Right, not if they're, not unless there's a plan for it. And I think, looking at the houses that have been built and sold, there's a clear need for housing in this community. I mean, we knew it, but when I see 1,800 square-foot houses selling for $270,000, you have got to be kidding me.
Right.
So...
Yeah, eight or nine of them are sold.
Yeah, it is just...
There's only like a couple left.
Well, I guess that's why the new ones are selling, because there's 100-year-old homes that they want over $200,000 for.
Yeah.
250, 60, a brand-new one, I guess that's a no-brainer.
Hey, I'm trying to talk my in-laws into buying Lou Ann John's old house, though, so I just...
I can't believe that's only 250.
It's so beautiful.
It is a beautiful house.
I think we move forward with the Furchy agreement, that's why.
I agree. I'll make that motion.
There's a motion by Soini to sign the option agreement with Jason Furchy. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Brick. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carries. And then with that, folks, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.